We're live? All right. Well, welcome everyone to the September seventh work session for Lowell School Board. I'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Conrad, will you do roll call? Record it anyhow? Yeah, Bobby won't be able to join us. Mic's online.
Yeah, I'm here.
Here. Recognition of meetings? Recognition of meetings? August tenth? Seven to seven, seven PM to seven eleven, regular board meeting. Uh, presentation. Next week we'll be doing a pride and promise. So, Mr. Frenzel?
We'll be presenting the shirt designers. Designer.
Designer.
Okay. Any reports from the standing committee?
Yes, uh, that's, there's a sheet in front of you for PSBA officer elections. And it goes over the voting procedure. Uh, they are electing twenty twenty-three president, uh, twenty twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three vice president, uh, and the central zone representative, three-year term, a section one CA advisor for a two-year term, and a section E-two advisor, uh, two-year term. There is a map on the back talking about the zones in particular for voting. Um, and, uh, there also is a, there's a trustee vote as well, which includes two candidates for three-year terms. And they are listed, uh, below. And again, um, you were saying earlier about the voting, what is done through an entity, like the school entity?
Yes, um, I got it, you know that I would be the one to register the votes, so.
If there is any votes.
Do you run and try anything?
No, you don't have to vote. Uh, the, these are, the, if, if, if you want to vote for PSBA officers, um, they are unopposed on here. Uh, but, uh, the voting does begin September ninth through October twenty-ninth, um, starting at five PM.
So, it's an unopposed slate and they want your vote, they're better than Iraq.
But, uh, if that information's there for you, have that hand out. And if you have any questions, please, uh, let myself and Jen know. Oh, wow. Thanks, Jeff.
Item D on here, basketball scorer's table. Uh, somehow my name got put on here. No, no, no. Um, so as a board, right, we agreed to anything over ten thousand dollars. Right? Hold on, bear with me. Can you finish?
Three.
Were you losing on me? So, in the budget, Mark and Kenny had allocated seventy-five hundred dollars. That was for the base, base model. After looking at it and determining what they felt we needed in the gymnasiums, they went with a higher version. Mark, twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars.
How can you breathe?
However, Mark and Kenny were able to talk with the company. And one of the options for procurement, the day auction, is a advertising schedule. Where they go out, they get the advertising, it doesn't cost the district anything for the table. And they do that for, uh, three years?
Anything they would make above the cost of the table would come back to them.
Come back to the district. And that contract would stay in place for ten years, I believe it was. At which point, all funds that were acquired through advertising would be the schools. So, although it doesn't cost us anything, right, it's not coming out of the budget. It was over ten thousand dollars, so I thought as a board, we should talk about it. Everybody was good with that.
Can we still do our program, Mark? So, the score day was where the people sit, right?
Yeah.
Tim, can you make one for Mark?
I don't do, I don't do electronics.
But it, there is a, it gives you an idea what it looks like.
Is that the table, it's not the, it's not the scoreboard too?
It's just one right in the middle.
The one in the middle.
So, what does it, does the table sit there? Like, so it has in the middle, it's able to one right in the middle, they have two visual monitors. So, we could put like, just put player pictures up there, um, and then the ad, the run-throughs for the score day. So, the screen, you got backup open?
And then do they?
How they protect it? How they protect it? There's just a hard, there's a hard cover-up. The, the, the screen sit back. It's the same one, like, if you want the machine to brush your, same machine. Everybody around you.
And if anything breaks, they service it?
Yep. All software upgrades. Yeah. There you go.
Can you sell, can you sell ads, like, say, at someone's birthday and you want to put up on the thing that? Right. Appropriately.
That is appropriate.
Not, we won't do the same thing.
No kissing cam.
It's, it's just a stationary feature, doesn't, you can't do instant replay or.
Oh, okay.
What screen, sir?
Two screens.
Oh, it's too good to be true. How are we going to be a good window?
Well, we let others go.
Don't wind that up till you sign.
Uh, we will, we let others go first, right? And so, uh, Frenzel was able to talk, he talked directly to other schools.
Right. And you figure probably somewhere between three thou, three thousand, five thousand dollars here in half, right? So, they're going to make somewhere between twenty-five hundred and fifty hundred dollars here, times ten. That's how they get their money.
Are any, question, is there anything in that contract, is there unbelievable pressure?
It doesn't cost us a dime.
Well, I mean, like, that's a pretty good contract, right?
Right. Right. No, it's just. So, the first year, we got to get just.
So, my.
Property management will produce the first check.
They're saying twenty-two, because they have the pretty fancy thing.
How much do they charge per month, you know?
Depends on how big. Reading the contract, it depends, there's like different sizes, and how many times per game.
And then after three years, it's our proceeds, I'd like to talk about that.
But I wanted to make sure we chatted about it. Right, obviously, it's not something we got to vote on. Mike, go ahead.
Uh, you said they line up the advertisements, do we get a say in what is being advertised?
You can always put parameters on it.
Yeah, that would be my only request.
Yeah.
They, they basically ask us first, who their salespeople.
What, what I like to do in situations like that is give them the vendor list. For people who, who spend considerable, we spend considerable sums of money on, uh, anyway. Um, and so that way, maybe, um, it's an opportunity for us to get some advertising from them. So, that's a good place to start, right there, is the vendor list.
Lance, I know you came in late. You got any questions, Bob?
No, I, I think, like Mike said, as long as, you know, it's not no holds barred. I mean, you know, the odds of somebody wanting to advertise something inappropriate at a high school, it may be, you know, anyhow. But still, it doesn't mean we can't put some parameters on it.
Nor would I think if they're at other places, that they don't have some type of.
Right. They don't want to make a bad name for themselves. And, uh, they make their juice, and after three years, it's our turn, it sounds like.
Then we get fifty percent, I'll put that, ten years, and then it's all ours.
Right.
Just the time to new table.
Yeah, pretty much how they set it on.
You feel like the life on the scoreboard.
Redo, ten-year redo, basically.
So. So, is everybody okay with that? Go ahead. Um.
Sir, anything about that?
I know we sent an email about the sideline store, giving people the opportunity to buy smart online. Mark, Mark and Kenny set it up, so when people do buy from that, the athletic department will get a percentage of the proceeds from the sales.
And it also uses our logo, not, uh, Michigan State. So, it's like our own MSU shop with our logo.
Hey, Mike, part of the contract says number six, ad approval. School has an opportunity to review and approve all displays, so that's in the contract.
Okay, thank you.
You touch? All right. Uh, item number four, administrators' provision of reports.
May I ask that Ed and Joe go before these guys go? Just flip the, the order on that and have their administrative, because these guys' admin reports are going to be all PSAS and Keystone. So.
Always go this way.
That's not the way it was listed there, so.
Joe?
Um, start of the school, I think, went pretty smooth, um, overall, very easy to start up. Like, we have a few adjustments, but they've run a couple drives, but overall, I think, we went pretty smooth. Nine days in here, uh, buses arrived on time at the high school and going at three. No real big issues. Uh, as far as the new buses, they arrived one day before school started. Definitely, when they come, when they come. And we had time to stop to do them ourselves. DOT had them, back to DOT, probably, when you get your buses, so we didn't run them the first two days. We ran the old buses with the new numbers on them. Got a whole DOT, we had one road that rocked, and put cameras in them, radios in them, and then two days, and we got them on the road. So, they're seen to be doing fine. My aunt decided, kept telling me they were going to be here, they can get here, there's nothing they can do, and that's well. It is what it is. Um, as far as the beginning of the year, we're starting off with a full staff of people. I got a couple subs also. And hopefully, we find them a good year. The drivers, the passengers, starting out the year.
Do we get gas buses, is that right? Are we on?
No, we got three D's.
Okay.
I bought a rental before school, an hour, then we got two more.
Real quick, vans.
Vans, we've been trying to get for the last year, the agreement we've been trying to replay. They're all, I think, nobody's got any, we can't get any. But these ones here are kind of rough, ruff ruddy, I guess, they're fifteen, seventeen years old. Try to move through another year, hopefully, try to do.
Well, because Ford canceled our order. So, you had budgeted for two. Ford canceled our order. He's going to make some cosmetic changes. Mechanically, you're still comfortable with those vans?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have to do some changes, so.
For local runs. What I told Joe is, if it's Mercer Butler Beaver Lawrence County, we agreed on this, we can run those green vans. But like, when we go to the farm show or things like that, we're renting vans. Last year as well. But I wanted you to know that you've committed to vans and we're not getting them. I did find a regular transit, brand new, that could be converted for a cheap price of seventy-five thousand dollars. So, what would the conversion be, another twenty, twenty-five? So, we could spend a hundred thousand on, so what I think we're talking about moving forward is, if we can't get vans, we want the transit. We may be looking to buy a couple minivans. But we're going to need information through the year about, like, your people use that van for CBI, how many are in there? You know, are we taking two to the FFA, are we going to, you know what I mean? So, we need to know, uh, because we might be able to get minivans, but we're not going to be able to get transits. And we're not going to drive vans with duct on the doors.
Well, even like the nine-passenger, a little bit less, that we have a couple of them running around with no lights, that's considered a nine-passenger, they're very scarce too.
Don't you need a bus, don't you need to have a bus endorsement on your license to drive that?
A lot of it doesn't have no lights. Doesn't have little yellow ones with no lights, it's just a regular van. Anybody could drive it, but that's, it's a nine-passenger van, but they're, they're.
I've got a fifteen-passenger, I could tear toolboxes out, but then I wouldn't have any to either.
And that's the thing.
Don't be selfish, Tim.
Nobody can take a bigger vehicle and take a couple seats out and say it's a nine-passenger.
I had two dealers say they could do that, and I told them, no, you can't.
No, them vehicles have to be sent to a body manufacturer company, and they legally got to put their tag on it that it is a nine-passenger. Not that they didn't just do that, but it's still the same thing, they have to do that and call it a school vehicle. Nine is a school vehicle.
Right, eight and a driver, right? That's the nine. Nine.
They don't have any of them at the auction?
Well, as a matter of fact, I found a, I found a used transit, and I shared the ad with them, a two thousand fifteen for only twenty thousand dollars, and they had two hundred fifty thousand dollars on it. Two hundred fifty thousand for twenty thousand dollars.
I did look at thirty-four, they're forty, they're thirty-three, white vans, there's somewhere inside, with the gray ones that I can see.
Anybody search California, they're going on like that.
But, in times of high need, you shouldn't charge your electric car.
You're correct.
Be careful how much you run the AC.
Top priority, seventy-eight degrees is what the good Gavin introduced, said we should set it at for the evening. I'm sure his is seventy-eight, by the way.
Yeah.
Is that before or after he went to the French Laundry?
Well, it depends if you have an offset.
Other questions for Joe? Ed?
Uh, last Friday, we replaced the wall pump at the elementary. First day of school, well, trip out, um, we tested, we called them book approach, and the ditch worked in the well. We couldn't get enough pumping until last Friday, so I don't play lottery with three to five. Um, I'll be burning myself up, we'll be up on. Um, well, well, three hundred eighty-five feet deep, and we'll sit at, um, three hundred and thirty. Can we, how long do we need to place that now? I thought it was fifteen years ago. I have numbers in the notes. God, thanks, I didn't remember. And I, I thought we did that, eleven years ago. Do we run water from here down there, remember, we, we can, we need to. Did we ever put, just, um, so we have a boost of pump here, they talked about it years ago. Because we had issues before. It was not add the need to utilize that, so.
Oh, question, do you know how many gallons per minute that is?
I think they're like an eighty gallon. And the pipe is three inches coming out of the well. It bred well, it's a very high production.
Couldn't be in a worse spot, though. Every time you work on it, by the time you pay the crane charges, you reach into that courtyard.
Crane, it's a big crane, it's a big crane.
Oh, my gosh.
Is, is there any way to just, I know it's expensive to move the well?
You don't move, you just re-drill.
Well, oh, you can't pull it out, you can't move it.
Well, I don't think you want that old casing.
Yeah.
But that would probably be cost, I mean, ahead of all that. I wanted to listen to the cost. We get some, um, over the history of the well, the back throw, my records, it's been averaging, we've worked in ten to twelve years. This time, it was fifteen years, we were very fortunate. I guess you think it's, uh, within that year.
I'll leave the notes for twelve years from now.
We replaced a, uh, AC compressor on the high school roof of computer labs, the high school. Um, the water pump on the elementary generator went bad. You're crazy, one day, and Bill was trying to stop that game, but I put it on for us. Uh, the next day, we just swam the last button, so it worked out just well. Um, we, I was thinking we went on, but that was piece of football field, and we were getting practice fields. That agrees, so that's good.
How's the gym?
Gym looks really good. Um, sleep tues are probably halfway done, and they're hoping to be done Saturday. We, we're all day, they're still here right now.
We could, we could do a little, uh, viewing for the board a half an hour before next week's meeting, if you'd like.
Yeah, I looked at the floor, it looked, looked pretty nice. I did, I'm getting questions about the girls volleyball match.
So, we did not spend the twenty-eight thousand, okay? Um, and also, Mark, can you explain about the hoops and the problems, et cetera, and what our solution is?
So, uh, when it was proposed to us, just putting the hole in the floor, would have been pretty easy for them, but the money was due to do that, but I went down and measured. Somebody would have measured in the first place, and played before just kind of put all that. Um, when you put this engine, the hoops, the main hoops don't go off the mound, so those volleyball courts go right, and that would go right through the main hoop. So, we, there's more money in the budget, we'll be able to raise that to main hoop, in order to put those, those courts better, I guess, because they're just too wide right now.
You got to get hinges and then one of them cable winches that suck it back and so forth.
Yeah, well, I put a hole in this engine. So, it won't go back, it'll have to go, it'll have to go side to side.
Okay.
Because if you, if you bring them out, they'll be in the way of the ball going back and forth, and they can't go back, because the ball is in the room. So, it'll have to go leftward. I don't know if it's going to take you, but I think it will, I talked to the guy, he thinks it's going to be somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand.
Right, and at that point, why not spend the twenty-eight and get it dropped from ceiling? So, instead, what are we doing?
More prices, and we're going to put it in the budget, not shit. I want to turn it, I was arresting that.
You didn't give me much to go with, Mark, at all. Not so long. Thank you. No, no, no.
And I think that, Mark's being nice, it's a critical point. We can't do what's being asked, it doesn't fit.
Oh, I agree, you don't want to, i- if it's not going to work, I don't want to spend the money on it. I'd rather do it, right? Takes another year.
So, I, I don't want the admin or the board blaming, like, we're not supporting volleyball and, or whatever else. We are, we had a plan A, that's not going to work. We had a plan B, that's not going to work. We're investigating a plan C, and when it comes state of law, time, you have the information.
Well, just to add one, I think we need to total what that's going to cost.
Right.
And back to what.
Right. Right.
Recession.
But I, I don't even know if plan A will work relative to the measurements. So, that, he's got, he, he and Kenny got homework, they'll be, they'll be ready in January for state of law.
Yeah. Take measures, see what I was taught. Yeah.
So, we, um, are going to, uh, present the Keystone and PSAS board?
All right, he has that slideshow, so we'll go to that slideshow there, Rob.
All right, so, as we do every year, we're going to, uh, present, like, French words for PSAS and Keystone from last year. Before we get started, really, um, proud of the hard work of our teachers and our students. We gained a lot of ground last year, um, good performance, so, um, everybody worked really hard in supporting us, which is a, uh, a fortunate stat we allowed to have, even though they weren't always utilized, as you wanted to, because of stuff, and issues. Still, uh, still did a nice job, and thank we're able to do that. So, third grade PSAs, uh, DOA, sixty-two percent proficient or above, uh, first in the county. And then math in third grade, seventy-nine percent, um, proficient or above, and that's first in the county. This is the second year in a row that third grade has been first in the county in both, in both Texas and everything.
Good. Well done.
Fourth grade PSAs, of course, there's the science as well. Uh, DOA, seventy-one percent proficient or above, that was second in the county, just behind Channing. Uh, math, seventy-six percent, and that was first in the county. And then our science was eighty-six percent, that's third in the county.
What are they learning in fourth grade in DOA that's harder?
So, in, in fourth grade DOA, they, that was when they entered into TDA.
Oh, okay.
Which is twenty-five percent of Texas, that's what, that's what, or a lot of that happens.
Okay.
Fifth grade, which is always traditionally been one of our, one of the toughest grades, well, we, toughest test grade, I would say. Um, DOA, the seventy percent proficient or above, that's second in the county. Uh, math was fifty-five percent proficient above, and that was third in the county. Um, very close, it was only like four or five percent above first, so the first three were very close there. And then sixth grade, um, our DOA, fifty-one percent, fourth in the county, and our math was fifty-four percent, and that was first.
On the ones that were first, that's easy. But on the ones where we're not, second, third, fourth, where were we last year?
So, ev- every place value increased.
Okay.
Every place, every, every ranking went up.
Okay. Percentage, Jan, right?
And what about year in a year? So, last year's fifth grade versus this year's sixth grade? Did they stay about the same, did they improve?
For, for some grade level, they did decrease. Traditionally, though, when you look at the state averages, they do go down.
Okay.
And every grade had an increase of ranking and raw test score, eighty percent. Wow.
Moving on to the middle pool, um, again, our score stayed pretty consistent, where we were at. And, um, pretty excited about coming back this year. Um, we had really good conversations on our data team meetings, um, about, but they thought, like, well, we're going to try different this year. Kind of, again, once again, close that gap that we're having with our, especially our math program, and, and get a couple new or seven, where it's one percent, one other. So, DOA, it was pretty, you know, like, fifty-four percent, very consistent where we were last year. Uh, one percent support from last year, three seconds in the county. Uh, thirty percent, third in the county.
Isn't that a shame?
That's terrible.
Because, again, mark this mentally, that if you just see the thirty percent, you think, what the heck are these people doing? But when you give it the, a degree of relativism, third in the county, the, the state has not, and this is right up, uh, your alley, relative to the grade levels you teach. You know, the, the state has not adjusted the, the test to the learner. I mean, if, if we got thirty percent, what, what, what's a district with high poverty or high special ed getting?
Bloodshed.
What's number two? We're, I mean, are they at thirty-two?
Yeah, very close, they're all very similar, and it was all, the outlier was twenty-three, and they're all at thirty-two. Eighth grade, um, science, first to ninth, seventy-eight percent, the highest in science, I'm guessing. Uh, math, thirty-three percent, third, and DOA, sixty-two percent, third. So, again, pretty consistent wherever we're at, that number. I think math was the, again, we're talking three to five percent drop off over the last couple of years. And that's kind of what we expected, seeing how over COVID, reading, reading rates, that's how we kept up. But the math, especially when you start getting your algebra, you're going to be a job off, actually show the world and do some. Uh, Keystone, Keystone is the only thing that they released state averages on this board. So, our, our algebra school did drop, there's a lot of factors to go into that. Generally, we were in a low, high fifty, low sixty with our first time test paper in algebra. But again, we had a lot of kids who were not ready to move on after one, over the COVID time. So, we had a lot of percentage of kids, like, three algebra, then algebra one. So, a lot of percentage of students who were first time test takers, and more than that, halfway success homework. Um, everybody, they, state average, thirty-seven percent. Still above that. Biology, again, a little lower than what we're used to, um, first time test takers. Uh, usually rough in the studies with that, right around our literature core, still finished second in the county in that. And again, state average, forty-eight percent. Literature. Literature, seventy-two percent, which is kind of coming in third to seventy-two percent, was kind of like a raw deal because I believe it was seventy-six, seventy-five, seventy-two. And that was a lot of, it's more important, that was a lot of fifty-six kids. So, we take five to fifty-six kids and you're asking fifty-six kids. Each kid's almost one and a half kids, there were, we have kids who were basically below their age. Two of them, they count three percent, I think, almost, in the county. Four to five, 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 you do that, but again, seventy-two percent for the first time. We always keep that pretty good set in our final test taking numbers. Class twenty-two, twenty-four, this, this year's current junior, so this is where we're talking with our proficiency percentages. So again, algebra's at fifty-nine. Those deal students still have two more opportunities to pass the algebra test. We have a good number of them who are within ten points of passing the test. Biology, seventy-one percent, and two more times to take it. And then literature, that was the same number as algebra today, the first time test. So, again, not, um, we had to say about five percent, but it's kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of lower than what it normally are, but we have people who have taken kids in TDA's and passing them.
And there's no rank?
No rank on these, because a lot of them are stuck there. E- everybody, that obviously says, well, basically you have, they're leaving this school, they can't do basic math. Probably twenty-five times.
Well, how many?
Some kids are never gonna pass the I D test.
Well, the test versus the course, though, Jeff. So, what's the fail rate in the course?
Uh, we have ninety-eight percent pass rate of algebra one. And, and again, so when you talk algebra, once you start getting to higher levels, it's like, I, I observed this all in the honors of the two class. We had each kid, maybe algebra one, but once you get to that, that higher level, honors, we do, it all happens. And I feel, although it's, it's some interest in your grade, you know, I'm coming out of the basement, that's how we go on to do algebra. So, a lot of these kids were taking algebra. Again, we don't wanna drill and kill them with algebra because geometry is very important if you're going to move on to college. Um, and, and personal finance is something that, you know, all of our students need here, so. We make sure they pass the algebra course, not making immediate, that's how the graduation requirement, but we do our best to make sure they pass the test. We got one key question there, but again, today. They have other aspirations outside of college, making sure that they have the math they need to go through, they're like, kind of, form and stuff.
Jeff, you have to realize, like, we're one of the only countries in the industrialized, industrialized world that even do this. Like, you know, you, you get your head beat over the head with Chinese scores and so forth. These kids that aren't passing the algebra test in any other, any of these other countries, they would have never taken it in the first place. They would have already been in a vocational track and baking products in the United States, be a slave labor. So, I mean, the idea that we're, we're doing this is, is an anomaly in so, so many other countries. I mean, they're laughing. I was like, why are you keep beating these kids' heads and making them take algebra? That's not their aptitude.
You might, you might know Willard Daggett. I'm sure educational people know Willard Daggett, uh, inter- international educator. He says, to your point, the United States educates everybody. That's the difference. The United States, nobody, nobody else does that.
Good or bad?
Mark, question, question. So, in the year, we were talking about changing the order of operations in regards to algebra. Did we do that?
Currently, this year, we changed, this is the first year of changing our algebra, our math code. So, right now, we have no algebra two classes on, so, yeah, kids in algebra one, we have two teachers teaching geometry, and then next year, we'll be grappling with the process of that. We think that'll have some significance for our eighth grade PSATs as well as, um, given the situation. More importantly, again, back at SATP, they're very strongly recruiting in algebra, so a lot of our kids are, are getting, once you pass the first semester, first quarter of free house, you get nowhere out for the rest of your life. Very highly accelerated. Seventh grade, algebra one, eighth grade algebra two, ninth grade geometry, tenth grade, when you're taking the CSAT, the last one. All of your tenth grade years, you should take CSAT, and you get no more algebra after that. Eleventh grade, you're taking the SATP, you're first one for the first time, and you have an algebra off for a year, two years. So, we do algebra one, two, then, yeah, we do algebra one, geometry. We're going out, we just changed the algebra one, geometry, algebra two. That's, this is the change of the issue. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I, I like, I like geometry for a lot bigger swath of the population than algebra two. Algebra two's not a very consumable math. I mean, there's a lot of times in geometry, you could make a, you know, a classroom example to, you know, whether it's landscaping, lumber building, there's so many other uses for it. And you get into the second nine weeks of algebra two, you know, you, the students are like, when would I use this? You're like, yikes.
Yeah, but I've been engineering.
Right.
So, if you look at it as Olympics, what were our gold medal performances? And what we told the faculty here is we are laser focused on achievement, and everything else we do supports that mission. Do we care about the whole child? We absolutely do, but we use achievement as the indicator. If achievement breaks down, do they need help mentally, physically, or spiritually? So, going back to those things, I don't want you to think, um, that it, it's academics and nothing else, but academics we use as the indicator, and that's our laser focus. So, just to refresh, uh, third grade ELA, math, back-to-back champs, fourth grade math, champs, sixth grade math, champs, eighth grade science, champs. Silver, fourth grade ELA, fifth grade ELA, seventh grade ELA, and Keystone Biology, and that was the first time she wasn't first in three years. Bronze medal, fourth grade science, fifth grade math, eighth grade ELA, seventh grade math, eighth grade math, and Keystone Literature. And also, keep in mind, when, when you measure the, the composite, we have something we went through now called assumed proficients. So, those would have been kids enrolled in algebra one during the pandemic that never took the test. Well, those were our best kids. So, we don't, we don't get to count, we don't get, they count as proficient for their graduation, but they don't get a proficient from, from us. If it were the Olympics, now, keep in mind, if you go three through eight with the PSSAs plus the Keystones, there are seventeen events, if you will. And if a gold's worth five points and a silver's worth three and a bronze is worth one, we were, we placed a more test in the top three than any other school in a county. And we, we would come in second, if you will, if you would score it relative to that. And you can see, basically, it, it's a, it's a two-way race, uh, with Mohawk and Shenango in a distant third and fourth. You might be surprised at Wilmington, but they didn't decide to play. We didn't get, they didn't share on the county spreadsheet relative to, uh, what their scores were. So, also, personal records, I think, are important. Fourth grade ELA, best we've ever done. Third grade math, best we'd ever done. Fourth grade math, sixth grade math, eighth grade science, and AP Literature. So, I, I bring that to the fore in this. So, if you're gonna take a test at the end of the year, and you're gonna get three credits, whether you pass that test or not, and all of a sudden Laurel makes you do ninety percent of your grades throughout the year as a test. I tend to think there's a correlation of that. So, you know, when we stuck to that grading and reporting, I think we have evidence relative to that paying off. So.
Do you remember?
It was whatever the teacher wanted.
Oh, no, eighteen, oh, pass rate before.
Oh, wow.
So, we went from twenty to thirty percent to eighty-eight. Oh, wow.
Wow.
So, let me say a couple or three things here, alright? First of all, to this leadership team, it doesn't happen if it's not measured. Second, to the seventy-plus teachers who executed that, it doesn't happen if they're not doing what they're supposed to do. How do we know what they're supposed to do? Cause they're meeting with them, they're talking to them, they're in their classrooms. And then third, of course, and the most important is the students. So, we, we have a nice circular process here between the administration, the teachers, and the students, and generating some performance. So, if there are any other, uh, questions on our presentation, myself or the team here is, uh, welcome to answer any of your questions.
The sixth grade scores, would that have been Mrs. Lemmick's last year?
It would have been. We'll see. Well, we moved, we also moved Angie Herman two years ago, and Kelly Jones stepped up, and Kelly Jones now finished number one in the county, just like Angie Herman, so follow the plan.
Everybody involved, and they did a hell of a job through the school system, and, um, the school did a great job in trying to stay open as much as it could.
That definitely matters. That definitely matters. So, I would encourage, uh, the principals to, uh, send out a little email about this presentation, and also, um, particularly the board's appreciation of their efforts and their results.
Yeah.
Great job. We do appreciate it.
Very much so.
Can't let it go. Jeff, you were almost nice.
Well, I, I, I was, I.
Almost.
For me? That's a name. Looks like you're working with this.
Okay. End of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, you guys. Um, boy, that turned me off. Um, administrative reports.
That was it.
Uh, maybe have a couple things. Uh, first, I wanna point out that, um, later on, they can, uh, is, uh, our gas, we, we, um, last month, we authorized, um, up to go, agreement, um, hundred-five dollars. For a gas bill, which unfortunately, um, there was decisions that, uh, the prices provided by, they're, they're, or it's incorrect, and it's determined that was accurate. So, um, I'm sorry that you find bringing up through these, uh, algebra intermediate units, which is one of the first, um, to join the consortium, and that was the best price we could find. It is NYMEX, which is the market rate, minus thirty cents. Um, we're going from that, from a, you know, an equal, say, price, that's probably, um. Um, our hope is that the price will, uh, under four bucks, but few places, so, um, we're hoping that that will not, like, it's a guy, but, um, I'll just, so. Uh, the AIU has a huge consortium, um, a lot of buying power. We are hopeful, we're gonna, future will be a great, keep, would stay with them, um, in the free of period, looks like our last one. Uh, McRitch and I, for several times about it, uh, this, as well, and that, uh, really, and so.
So, what was our price last year?
Two dollars and eighty-six cents.
And it is now going to be?
How did we, we, it's on the market rate, which right now, I think is around eight dollars, minus, so it'd be seven, uh, seventy?
And so, percentage wise, Lance, give me a percentage of what our bills are.
Three hundred percent.
Two to eight?
Pardon?
How many three cents?
Yeah.
Three days.
Three hundred.
Roundhouse.
Yeah, three hundred percent. All that. So, what was our gas? I mean, you have a, what are our gas for a while?
Last year, it was, I mean, I was guessing for a while, but, um.
Is that gonna be?
I did like it.
Three hundred percent more?
I did like it more.
So, we're saying it could be three hundred percent more than mine?
Yes, it, it, the market is not saying where that.
I understand. Well, we gotta send gas to you too. Uh, wrong with that?
No, there's nothing, but we, we think I'm making cheap here.
No, we're not here to advocate for our citizens.
If you could, I need a ballpark, yeah. I'd be scared for the hell out of you. That'd be a huge number, I'm sure.
Yeah, once, uh, I'll find it while, while, okay.
We're paying for school lunches again, too, right?
Yep.
Yes.
That's what I mean.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. Okay, just the gymnasiums in Ukraine are full, some sixties. That's good. You wanna fight him over there or not here?
No.
Anything else?
That line worked last time, huh?
Well, no, it didn't.
Uh, I'm, uh, I'm just getting ready for our, um, first time October, um, getting everybody to try to check out the run, and teachers, and, and thank you.
Cause the classroom, we said it's sixty-four, sixty-one, they're like it was in the seventies.
Wear a sweater.
Okay, in, in your package, you'll find the administrative reports for board of directors. Uh, comments, questions from the floor relative to agenda items?
I did have this one thing from Mr. Frangial. Um, I am gonna be talking, asking about that fentanyl program again this year. Uh, I talked to Dan Bailey, uh, the guy that, uh, the young man that had parts to do with that, uh, Just One film. Sometime in October, I thought he was gonna be around, but I don't know what our schedule was or anything, so I just wanted to keep that on our priority. Thank you.
So, a hundred K, a hundred thousand.
But that's crazy. I used to have the same amount of gas at school that last year.
So, that's where it's all going.
That's where it's all gone. Lance, can you join the consortium so we get a better price?
That's scary. And you're getting NYMEX minus thirty.
You're right.
Sure there's a plus in front of mine.
Uh-huh, and it's not a three.
And they don't give you, oh, you watch, they fix that line.
So, I'm good now.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I never had that problem. Well, yeah, the line had lots. I, I need seven pounds or seventeen on the line, but they worried, worried I was gonna suck a drive, but I, their engineers saw that I wasn't, so. They cranked me another two pounds of pressure. Seven million, we can use it.
Alright, so next, uh, next week, we'll be approving the minutes from the August tenth board meeting. We will be approving the treasurer's report. We'll also be approving the investment report. Approving of bill listings for general fund bills, food services. Item nine, personnel, retirements and resignations. Uh, we have the following resignations. Micah Miller, instructional aide, Jesse Gardner, wrestling assistant coach, um, but will remain on the volunteer list. John McFarland, assistant football coach, Scott Boyer, um, musical orchestra director.
This is temporary? I was curious about that.
Can you explain?
It was bound to replace us, then.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Um, department heads, approve, uh. Ms. Laurenta has elementary math department head, and Kathy Parker has elementary social studies department head. Sophomore class advisor, Mrs. Heights. Uh, musical orchestra director, Kenneth Stewart. Approve the leave of absence.
Michelle Schweickert.
Schweickert. Uh, girls head track coach, we don't have a name yet, Justin, that's next week.
Yes, uh, girls track and baseball, uh, the athletic committee will have interviews on Tuesday, the thirteenth, six o'clock, in the boardroom.
That'll be for girls, track coach, baseball, distant wrestling coach.
No, that is just.
There's Jay. There's Jay, there's Jay Mattio for varsity assistant wrest- wrestling coach. Assistant track field coach, Jerry Johns. Assistant football coach, junior high, William Jones. Transfer of sick days for Ms. Palmer. Professional development workshops and seminars for staff. Additions to the volunteer, non-instructional substitute listing. Board action items committee as a whole. PIAA approved programs. Uh, grant permission for student athletes to participate in the PIAA approved programs for the district. Fall athletics, grant approval for coaches. Student finalists and teams in football, volleyball, and golf participate in the review. Yeah. Okay. Uh, policy and second reading, approve the second reading and adoption revisions of policy eight oh eight. As required by Act fifty five. Which is school cafeteria account form, natural gas supply agreement. As Jen said, three-year agreement. Internship. For, uh, Ms. Belko, graduate of Slippery Rock University. She'll be with Ms. McKellen, McLennan, that's it. Affordable Care Act. Uh, agreement with Lawrence County Social Services. For Head Start, a pre-K program. Uh, dispose of weight equipment.
Did we replace some of this or did we?
Mark.
So the stuff we got right off, um, was off the lead and not on the list. So we, uh, we just met with a company out at first, um, they did a markup of what three weeks of living on marketplaces. And then they're helping to help us try to secure some grants to high marketplaces to operate, um, to, you know. There was one bench that was broken and we're using some of the funds we got from, you know, the drill office, like that one. And they did a new piece of crossover in there, so.
We had some excess bars. We're getting rid of those bars.
Yeah, I didn't know. I know we, we go down to the corner here and I didn't know whether we still fit a lot up here.
So who's still using that?
So junior high, well, almost junior high, we, we, um, our trainers, um, glad we take some kids out there. We're going to have to bother off that. PE classes, we just.
Uh, general fund sweep account. Our insurance is, uh, going to go up by approximately five hundred dollars over the last year's school year. Approval of addition of general sweep account with DNC Bank. Jen, do you want to talk about that or does anybody have questions? I guess I should ask.
Uh, Jamie Maras is our banker at DNC, uh, has been watching, um, since we closed this last fall sometime, um, to be of interest. It didn't become favorable, so we're going to get, bring Jamie over to the national office that he was at, um, generated by right now. So she's contacted me middle of August or end of August and said, we're there, um, we can get that set out, um, for the material benefit of the law on her. Add that back in. So this is one of those, we said, um, limit on our barrel fine up to say a hundred thousand dollars. And they take all the money, put it over the interest bearing, what is not needed. And as soon as you need it, it goes back over. And the rest stays on there and generates a response. They did, we closed it when they started charging fees for the sweep, um, of their interest. The interest was not offset in just that one fee. But, uh, it showed me the first few bits made sense and it, uh, that means, at least interest rates will keep, at least stay where they are.
Well, I think the fed needs the middle of the month and he's supposed to jack it up half to three quarters, right?
Yep.
That's what I heard as well.
Yep. Um, item K, approval of field trips. Ms. Nimmo would like to take the PE club to Slippery Rock University. Cost of the district will be transportation and a substitute for Ms. Nimmo. Item L's, the score table agreement.
Mark, you and Kenny did a good job with the score table.
Hey, uh, I heard, um, some kids talking, they're very happy with the Ag program already.
I've heard the same.
Um, Jen, the one thing I didn't see under item eleven, new business. Um, we did a grant for some security cameras and stuff. I didn't know if everybody on the board knew about that.
The, um, PCP division?
Yeah, I think so.
Um, yeah, that was through the state. Um, the, uh, application was due August thirty first, which we got in. Um, we had cameras, we have police radios, there's two, let me back up, there's two parks still, there's, um, this is a face and mental health.
Behave, mental behavioral.
Yeah, so, um, we put in cameras, we put in the PA system, so that, um, we just put in, um, that is on our, um, the police radios as they mentioned. And the, uh, the police, uh, department had asked for a mule.
An onsite, onsite mule.
Or the, yeah, we put all of that in there. Um, we got a hundred and fifteen thousand for each of those buckets.
Oh, wow.
So, um, yeah.
Good job.
That's awesome.
I couldn't do anything about it.
No, it's just not a lot.
Yeah, but you had to submit for it. Well, you had to submit it, you had to sign it.
But I wanted to, I wanted to make sure everybody on the board was aware because one of the things was the PA system, right? We had questions about whenever the budget came up and then also the mules for, uh, Spartan police. So, uh, that was great.
So we have some quotes, we're looking at some different things. And if and when the money comes through, then, then we will look at, uh, specs and, um, make a recommendation from there. But, you know, again, that'll be over ten grand, so this board will see our recommendation before we make a purchase.
Do they have all time use or just for the?
No, if, if the police aren't using it, it'll be available to maintenance. But what, what we want to do is, um, have something, like, for example, in the spring, you could have a softball, baseball, and track meet, right? And we, we want them to be able to get around, we want to be able to get back to the, um, back baseball field, so.
Okay. Any questions from the floor? Um, I would ask for the board members to stick around for a couple minutes. Um, but everybody else, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.